I'd like to call the City Commission to order for Monday, November 12th, and ask those that wish to join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, has the role been taken this evening?
It has, all are present tonight.
Wonderful, thank you. We have one item under Proclamations and Presentations. I'll ask the City Manager to give us an opening on the Nottawa Township Sewer System.
Yes, we have Pete Lorenz here on behalf of the township, and he has a couple representatives with us that's going to give a short presentation on the status of the Nottawa Township Sewer. The reason this is important to us is they're looking at a future meeting for the City Commission to indicate a willingness to partner in this project together by treating some of the sewage. And we think this is important to the city for a number of reasons, the primary piece of which, this would allow a system to be put in place to the west of us, which will help protect the Chippewa River, which is obviously a great asset to our city. We have excess capacity at our wastewater treatment plant, and having more flows would allow us to spread those costs. And it just makes sense, quite frankly, to utilize our existing infrastructure to help one of our neighbors out, so we think it's a good idea for that reason. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Lorenz, who's going to speak for about five to 10 minutes for you on this matter.
My name is Pete Lorenz, Lorenz Surveying and Engineering. This is Joe White with Wolverine Engineers and Surveyors. We're working cooperatively on this project for the engineering. This is Cory Mendel, Township Supervisor for Nottawa Township. The township's been working on a new sewer project for the Beale City and Co-Water Lake area for some time now. We're still in the preliminary stages, but we have put a lot of effort into evaluating different options for the design and construction of the system. As I said, the project includes both Beale City and the Co-Water Lake area. How do I get this to come up here, Jeremy? Okay, I guess we can probably proceed without it. I don't see where it's critical. What I had, I was just going to show you there are a couple of special assessment maps, that it was going to show you what the proposed service area for the project was going to be. There's one area that's around the Beale City area, which Beale City is an unincorporated area, so it falls under the jurisdiction of the township. And the other area is surrounding Co-Water Lake. It's where the project is being proposed. That's probably, we can probably go without it. Okay, that's fine. We've had some meetings with USDA Rural Development regarding the project. Based on those meetings, we're looking at some long-term, low-interest loan for the project. We're pursuing a 40-year term on the loan. That will be in addition to $3 million that was secured by Representative Houck through the state of Michigan. We have, so far, we've completed the first part of our preliminary engineering report. And the preliminary engineering report is required by Rural Development and also the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality. In that report, we analyzed different options for collection and for treatment of the sewage. And when we were evaluating those options, one of the options we evaluated was the potential to treat the sewage at a neighboring municipal facility that was already in operation. And that's what first put us in contact with staff at City of Mount Pleasant. We had some meetings with staff, and at that point, we learned that there was extra capacity in the treatment facility at Mount Pleasant, and that possibly there would be a desire to treat the sewage at the city facility. So that led to some additional meetings that we had with the City of Mount Pleasant. At the last meeting we had with Nottawa Township at the board meeting, we laid out all these different scenarios for collection, treatment, how it could be handled. And at that meeting, the board selected what their preferred options were. We selected some collection options, which really don't have a huge impact on the city, but their preferred option for treatment was to construct a force main, which is a pressurized sewer that would run from Beale City to the Mount Pleasant Treatment Plant. And part of that preferred option was the hope that we could have it treated at the city's treatment plant, and that would be done through a long-term intergovernmental agreement, that we were hoping that we could get put in place between the township and the city. When we look at this project, you know, we think there's a lot of benefits to doing something jointly through an agreement here. You know, it would save the township from duplicating a service that already could be offered by the city. It eliminates the need for the township hiring additional personnel. It also would eliminate an additional discharge to the Wagner Drain, which is a tributary to the Chippewa River watershed. So we felt that that was a benefit, too, that there's already a discharge here in Mount Pleasant through that treatment facility, so there wouldn't be need for an additional. Another thing is that it allows for us to keep the land that's in that area, that if we had to use that for treatment, it becomes a pretty good footprint for some property that would come out of agricultural production. That, you know, and another benefit we feel to the city, it gives the city a chance to generate some revenue from some infrastructure that's already in place, and it's already constructed, and it's there. So we thought that that, you know, may be a benefit to the city. So currently, as it stands right now with the township, we have outlined what our options are for construction. The board has selected what they would like to be their preferred option. Going forward now, we need to submit those options to Rural Development DEQ in expanding upon our preliminary report. And that's why we felt it was important at this point that we come in front of the commission to get an idea, to see if we had support, you know, from the commission. You know, we've had numerous meetings with the staff, which the staff has been very cooperative, very good to work with, and we appreciate that. But we just felt, moving forward, if we had some sort of acknowledgement from the commission that, you know, they supported this, that would allow us to put that in our report that's going to go out to Rural Development and to the DEQ. And it also would give the township board some comfort in moving forward that, you know, we're all on the same page, that we want to try to work together and get this done. So, because there is quite a bit of work that would be done, yet need to be done, to develop this intergovernmental agreement. It's something that's going to have to be, you know, the minimum term on it's going to have to be 40 years, the term of our financing. My own personal opinion, I would hope that we could probably negotiate something that could maybe even go beyond that and expand upon that. Because there is a significant infrastructure cost to installing a force main, which would run all the way from Beale City to the City of Mount Pleasant. So I think it's important that this be looked at long-term in order to benefit and benefit the residents long-term. So, I don't know, Joel or Cory, if you guys have anything you guys want to add?
I think you've covered.
You got it covered. I'd like to thank the board for letting us come and speak tonight.
I guess if anybody has any questions, we'd be happy to try to answer them. Commissioner Kulik.
Nancy, a couple of the reasons why we have excess capacity is that, if I'm correct, is that several years ago, we were treating union townships' waste, and they built their own plant. And Central Michigan has been on a terror the last decade or so, reducing their flow, low-flow toilets, low-flow waterheads and everything like that, is part of the reason why we have so much capacity. And even if we took the load that is being proposed here, we would still have enough capacity to develop the area of the regional center, correct?
Yes, we believe so, based on the analysis we've done thus far.
So as, you know, the email and communication regarding this has been proposed, is that this, unless the commissioners object, we'll probably have a resolution on the next agenda, the next meeting, to support, so that when they send their information to the state of Michigan and the government, that they have a resolution of support to continue to go down this path, unless there's objection from the commissioners. Commissioner Ling.
I think that's a great idea. I really appreciate the fact that the staff has been working with the representatives from the township to come up with a solution that's mutually beneficial and that makes good use of taxpayers' resources. So I'm very much in favor of it. And while I have the township supervisor here, I want to mention, I have heard, this gets talked about a little bit around our household, because there is a member of the county commission in the household, and he has mentioned several times what a great job he thinks the township has been doing in addressing what was a very serious issue for all of us. So thank you for the work that you've done on this.
Commissioner Gillis.
Addressing your 40-year financing, that is going to be an outside source. That is not the City of Mount Pleasant, correct?
Correct. That will be USDA Rural Development is where we're seeking that. And we've had numerous meetings with them, and things are looking positive right now that we think we're going to be able to secure that loan, so.
Okay. And then the drain would go from Beale City all the way to our water treatment plant here on Pickard, or off of Pickard?
We've, that's what we're anticipating right now, is down Beale City Road to Mission, and then coming down all the way to the treatment plant. We have had some discussions with the DPW about potentially, there's a gravity sewer at the city limits, that we don't know if it has ample capacity in it or not. We'd like to explore that option. Our thought, our plan was to continue to work with the city engineering department to see if potentially we could use that portion of gravity sewer that's already in place from the city limits on old Mission all the way to the plant. Would save some infrastructure cost.
Okay. And this would just be human waste, no agricultural waste, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
We're, I would, the, within the special assessment district boundaries, we have really no industrial or, you know, it's going to be mostly residential strength waste that we're going to be dealing with. There are a few commercials, you know, such as some convenience stores, you know, things of that nature, but from the most part, it's going to be residential strength waste.
We have the schools also.
Yeah.
And for our city manager, what is going to be the cost to us, or any downsides to us?
We have not been able to identify any downsides, and Mary Ann has been working on proposed costs to make sure that what we would charge for the waste that comes in would cover our costs for treatment of it, so that we wouldn't be making a quote-unquote "profit" on it, but it would certainly cover our costs.
Thank you.
Any other commissioner alone?
I would be in support of this as well. I think it's part of our obligation to help protect the Chippewa River and be good neighbors to Nottawa Township. And I just think it's overall a good idea to use what we already have, so I'll be in support of this.
Great. All right. Anyone else?
Again, I'll echo Commissioner Ling's comments. I think you guys have done a wonderful job on this. Cory, I've heard a lot of presentations and conversations about this, and everyone has said, you kind of came into the supervisor position, and this was dropped on your lap, and you picked it up and ran with it in an amazing way. And, you know, everybody has had nothing but great comments about the work you've been able to put into this and lead this, you know, problem that you ended up with that affects everyone in the community. So on behalf of the city and the city residents, we thank you for taking that on.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Sorry for the technical difficulties, by the way.
No problem. Thank you.
All right. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda this evening? Seeing none, I will open up the first opportunity for public input. This evening, we have three opportunities for public input. This is opportunity now for any items on the agenda. If you are here regarding the operating budget, the 2019 operating budget, we ask that you hold your comments until item number 12, when we have a public hearing. We also have an opportunity at the end of the agenda for any city-related comments. But if you are here for anything else on the agenda, like perhaps number 10, this would be your opportunity to come up and speak. We ask that you state your name and address when you begin, and limit your comments to five minutes. And it looks like there are quite a few people here, so if you want to kind of line up quietly on the side so we can move along, we would appreciate that. I will open it now.
I'm Robert Newby, 816 Beach, and I'm here on behalf of the Mount Pleasant Area Diversity Group to make, we're requesting that the City Commission officially receive the proposal and vote on it as soon as possible. We would like to request that after receiving the proposal, that the City Commission take appropriate steps to consider and revise if necessary the proposal. Essentially, what we're suggesting is that, as everyone knows, there's been a considerable amount of tension over the last few years between police and particularly minority communities. And what we're proposing is a process by which there can be review of police, police community relations in that sense. And so what we're trying to do is, sort of in response to the Black Lives Matter movement more than anything else, is to suggest a process by which these police community relations can be enhanced by reviewing training proposals, et cetera, and this kind of thing. But essentially, what we're trying to do is set up a process by which, if people have complaints, there's a process by which they can voice those, and there can be transparency between the police and the communities, is essentially what we're proposing. And I think it's item 10 on your agenda. If you have any questions, I'd be more than willing to answer them. Thank you. Hope you will consider it.
Hi, my name's Dr. April Burke. I'm a faculty member at Central Michigan University. I live at 1018 Sweeney Street. I'm also a resident here in Mount Pleasant, and I would also like to support, to speak in support of item number 10 on the agenda. Central Michigan University has made great efforts to try to increase the diversity of our campus by recruiting students of color from different parts of the state, as well as other states. As we know, having a more diverse campus has tremendous benefits for all students. It also has tremendous benefits for our community. So in the same way that Central Michigan University has taken steps in a very positive direction, I think that Mount Pleasant also has the opportunity to take a very positive step forward by approving this initiative. We know right now that there is a national crisis because of the lack of police oversight. And again, this is one way in which Mount Pleasant can be a leader in taking an initiative to try to, to try to prevent the types of, you know, problems that are existing far too much on a national scale. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Joyce Henricks, 1005 Glen Avenue. I just want to see, if I can do this, with the people in the audience who came here to support this proposal, please raise your hand. Thank you. We do have support, and we ask for your support.
My name is Sterling Johnson. I live at 622 South Arnold. Been here 30 years. I teach at CMU. I don't know if anyone saw this weekend's New York Times Magazine. It raises the question, how did law enforcement let things get this far in terms of poor police community relations and racial relations in this country? It's because of a lack of oversight. It's because of lack of attention from the bodies that govern our, these very forces, is essentially what this article has to say. Therefore, I would ask you to support this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Australia Coleman. I'm a student at Central Michigan University. I'm also the president of the NAACP chapter. I live at 4750 East Bluegrass Road. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Citizens Review Board, because we are having issues similar to this on campus right now. And I think that if we can work from outside of our campus towards inside of our campus and have the influence, it would greatly affect our campus, and it would help us move forward with things that we're working on in campus right now. I know we've recently had some issues between the police and things being handled with racism and kind of the way that we approach that. And I think if we had the influence from outside of our campus to show that the police are also working on it, our campus police would kind of follow in suit. So I would like to say that we're kind of all here in support of this.
Hi, folks. My name is Jim Marino. I live at 316 South Arnold. I'm very glad to be in support of the Citizens Advisory Board. I think it'd be a really good thing to do, and like some of the previous speakers alluded to, be a leadership role for Mount Pleasant to take and the City Commission to take. But I also want to let the people know that at county, we have a law enforcement and community affairs committee, which is open to the public. It meets every other Tuesday morning, real early, I think about 7:30. No, 8:30. But anyway, and we always want to have people there, the sheriffs are always there, and the two commissioners representing our board as a whole are there, dealing with these issues, and are really happy to get any kind of feedback that you would want to give them, and relationship building, that sort of thing. So I do want to say that, that this would be a really good step forward. There's always a better chance with understanding and communications than rumors and ignorance. Thank you.
Commissioner Marino, what was that committee that you just spoke of?
Oh, the committee is called Criminal Justice and County Affairs Committee. I'll give you, Jared Jerosowski and Frank Engler are the commissioners that represented it at this time.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who has any comments for us on any items on the agenda this evening? Seeing none, I will close this portion of public input and ask the city manager to go through the items, the receipts of petitions and communications.
We have a number of petitions and communications for you this evening, including the following: the report on our pending items, the traffic control committee minutes from both June and August, the September minutes of the Parks and Recreation Commission, the Zoning Board of Appeals, and the Tax Increment Finance Authority Principal Shopping District Board, and the Planning Commission. And then unfortunately, we have two resignations from two of our local boards, one from the local development finance authority, from Cash Donapal, who has taken a job out of our city, and so we have a vacancy there. And then Miki Claus-Egger has resigned from the Cultural and Recreation Commission. Both of those have been forwarded onto the Appointments Committee for consideration. And then, as you heard, there's the recommendation for the establishment of a Citizens Advisory Board. And I just wanted to give you a couple more pieces of information about this matter. As Dr. Newby mentioned, the Mount Pleasant Area Diversity Group has been working on this proposal for some period of time. Director Loria and I started meeting with the group in August, based on the recommendation of Commissioner Ling and Commissioner Lalone. And we couldn't agree more that ways to increase dialogue and communication throughout our whole community is important, and we strongly believe in that. From a good news standpoint, we looked back over the last four or five years about complaints that we've received about officer conduct. And over the last four to five years, we've only had between one to three complaints filed each year. As we talked about that as a group, though, there's really three things that that could mean. One could mean that the conduct, that there are no conduct issues out there. Secondly, it could mean that people don't know how to file concerns if they have them. Or thirdly, it could mean that, for some reason, people are fearful of doing that. And as a group, we decided that there's probably some combination of all three of those going on in our community. So we felt that starting out with an advisory board to help with dialogue and communication, and help with discussions about how complaints are investigated, how many we really have, where they come from, and helping people to understand how complaints can take place, seems like a good first step for us. So we're really emphasizing the part that we think this could be a good advisory board to start out with, as opposed to an oversight or a review board. We want the first year to be about increasing communication and dialogue. And so we generally agreed upon the functions that are outlined in the proposal that you received, and are fairly comfortable with those functions. There's a couple things in the rest of the proposal that as staff, we would like to talk to the group about, maybe slightly rewording, just to make sure that expectations are managed appropriately. But we think we can fairly easily resolve those if you decide to move forward with this proposal. So we would take that opportunity if you decide to. So this evening, we're just looking for your guidance on what you would like to do as the next steps for it. And then lastly, under petitions and communications, we received four email communications through the weekend and today that were on your dais tonight, and they were all in regard to the Citizen Advisory Board. One was from Laura Cochran at 221 East High Street, Sarah Grandstaff at 706 Garwood, Eric Chirkover and Xanthah Karp at 318 East Cherry, and Kelly Lawson at 5236 Bridle Lane.
So if I can, just so you know, the intention when the city manager brought this item to me and the vice mayor, the vice mayor and I at our agenda meeting, the, because the commission as a whole hasn't had an opportunity to talk about this, but we're also getting close to the end of the year and have very full plate, what we talked about was accepting this as a communication this week with the idea of asking the commission to, if it's okay, to have it on the next agenda as an action item, where we can discuss and then vote on the item. So I guess I would look to the commission to force support. So, I guess I would look to the commission to force support of that action. So, Commissioner Joseph.
I motion to accept the receipt of petitions and communications and to put Item 10, the Citizen Advisory Board, on our next commission meeting agenda.
Commissioner Lalonde?
I second that.
Okay. What's that? Commissioner Gillis?
I said, I didn't think we usually do motions on receipt of petitions.
I don't think you need a motion there. You just need...
Yeah, we typically don't. We can have a motion to, can we have a motion to add it to the next agenda item? We're just going to accept feedback?
It's your call.
Yeah.
What do Robert's rules say?
There's no harm in doing a motion.
There's no harm in doing a motion. Okay. I will accept a motion. Are there other comments or support that was to people or do you want to just vote on having this as an action item on the next agenda? Commissioner Kulik.
I, you know, I believe there's an advantage to increase communications, but I get the feeling that this is a solution looking for a problem that doesn't exist in our community.
Commissioner Gillis?
I would like to just wait for two weeks and bring it up two weeks from now so I can have some more time to study that. And I knew nothing about the county already having a committee, Criminal Justice and Community Affairs Committee. So, I'd like to look into what they entailed in their charge. I wouldn't want to duplicate anything. And I would rather it be on a county level rather than a city level. I think at the county level, we could not only incorporate the city but the CMU police rather than individual the city. So, I'd just like to take a little time to look at that a little bit more and take in the new information and find out what actually is already being done.
Are you opposed to having it as an action item on the next, well, I guess we're going to vote on it in a minute. Commissioner Joseph?
I just wanted to note that in my time as a commissioner and other elected boards that I served on in this community, that having a voice for the people and the people that we govern and the people that we have in advisory groups, to me, is something that's really important. And I really look forward to supporting this next week. I think that all the communications that we've gotten have been in the positive and have been really for this. So, I don't see any reason that we shouldn't go forward. So, I look forward to supporting this at our next meeting.
Commissioner Lang?
I'm going to support this motion, but I am sympathetic with the issues that have been raised because we are just receiving this letter and we're talking about then taking action on it in two weeks from now. So, I think that the proposal as presented is a reasonable proposal that is an attempt to be a proactive step that keeps us in the, a leadership position in trying to address these kinds of issues. So, I'm comfortable with it, but I hear the city manager indicating that there may be a need to do some tweaks on the specific structure of it. So, I'm going to vote in favor of our putting it on the agenda in two weeks. But I'd also like to suggest that we look at the possibility at our work session this evening. If at the end of that work session, we want to take a couple of minutes to talk about any issues that we might want the staff to be aware of before they prepare their suggestion for our next meeting, I would be comfortable with that. Because I do think there are some questions that have been raised that are worth spending a little bit of time talking about. So, it does kind of put it on a faster track than we normally do. But I know that the group that's been working on it has been working on it for several years, actually. So, from their perspective, it probably doesn't seem like that fast a track. And I think we can accommodate both. So, I'm going to support it, but I'd like to see us have a brief discussion at our work session.
Okay. So, we are going to take a vote on whether or not we're going to add this to the agenda on the 26th of November as an action item to then have further discussion. And we'll have a brief discussion this evening at the work session if this passes, just letting staff know the information that we'll need to know to be able to make an informed decision at that meeting. So, with that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
All right. That passes. So, this item will be on the November 26th agenda as an action item for the commission to vote on. All right. I will now ask the city manager...
I have a comment. Oh, sorry. It's not as big as the last one. The minutes of the traffic control committee?
Yes.
Were putting new street names on top of the stop signs?
Okay.
Well, we're replacing some of them. I just wanted to make a note that on cross lanes, the street is cross lanes with an S, but the street signs say cross lane. Just so somebody knows, because I'm a proofreader, as you all know.
All right. We will have someone in DPW take a look at that and decide whether it was wrong before or whether it's wrong now. All right. So, with that, I will ask the city manager to go through the consent calendar. Any of the items on the agenda that have a little asterisk next to them, we ask the city manager to go through as one lump sum so that we can vote on them together. Are there any items that anyone would like removed from the consent calendar? All right. City manager would do that, please, for us this evening?
We're suggesting for your action, the minutes of your special meeting that was held on October 29th on CMU's campus. And then we have three bids for you. The first is for the water treatment chemicals. And annually, we send out bids for all of our bulk chemicals so that we can lock in the price for the year. So, we're recommending a word of various bids that are as presented in that memo for you. And note that they're all for one year except for the caustic soda as those vendors continue to only be willing to lock in their price for six months at a time. The second one is for downtown grounds care and maintenance. As you know, our Parks and Public Spaces Department has been providing this work in the downtown area for a number of years now. We sent the document out for bid for the identifiable pieces of groundskeeping and also the watering of the hanging baskets because we felt those were identifiable and were things that the private sector might be able to do for us. We received one bid, and when that was compared to the pricing provided by the Parks and Public Spaces Department, the Principal Shopping District Board is recommending that they stay with the Parks and Public Spaces for the work for the next three years. And we have internal controls in place to ensure that charges for this work are within the stated amounts. The third bid is that we received a 2% grant in the spring for the replacement of the vehicle that's used by our youth services unit. The bid was sent to eight different dealers, and we're recommending a word of the purchase to Berger Chevrolet for $36,602. And then the next item is for our annual stop loss insurance. As you know, the city self-funded for our health insurance claims, but we purchase an insurance policy that covers any high-cost claims that occur in one year. Our broker sent out these bids for us on our behalf. And as the memo indicates, multiple bids were received. I think there were seven, and two of them were actually a decrease from our current costs. Although the lowest bidder had a slightly larger decrease, our recommendation is to stay with our current company because that company allows us to overlap the claims from the years and looks favorably on staying with one company. And lastly, we're recommending approval of payrolls and warrants.
I see a motion from Commissioner Kulik, seconded by Commissioner Joseph. Any comments or questions this evening? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All those items pass. All right. Item number 12 is a public hearing. I will let the city manager give us a brief note. Do you have any comments?
Which is very brief. Every year, we hold a public hearing on the operating budget so that you can receive official public comment on what's been proposed. And tonight's the night for that. And after holding it, you're not required to take any action.
So, with that, I will open the public hearing. I will ask that you state your name and address if you have any comments for us and limit your comments to five minutes. It's a very exciting, thrilling read. No comments on the operating budget. All right. We'll close that opportunity, and we will have a further discussion this evening on the operating budget with hopes to vote on it at our first December meeting. Item number 14, consider approval of an ordinance to amend Section 98.37 from the Mount Pleasant City Code regarding snow and ice removal.
We had snow on Friday, didn't we? So, as you know, we've had multiple discussions on sidewalk snow removal over the last couple years. And an ordinance was drafted that you held a public hearing on on October 8th. And that ordinance amendment keeps in place the current requirements for industrial and commercial properties to clear their sidewalks within 18 hours after the snow stops. It also adds a requirement for the remaining property owners in the city, primarily the residential areas, to clear the snow from the sidewalks within 48 hours. After holding your public hearing on October 8th, you passed a motion to postpone action on that ordinance amendment until a work session discussion was held. And as you know, that work session discussion was held on October 29th. And there seemed to be maybe that there might be support next year for looking at options for the city to clear the sidewalks in a phased approach potentially. But it's still necessary for you to close the loop on this original postponement. So, we put it on the agenda for you this evening, and you basically have three options. You can approve the ordinance as it was drafted. You can reject the ordinance amendment, or you can postpone it to another date or until other information is requested or received.
I see a motion from Commissioner Lang.
I'm going to make a motion to take the second option, which is to postpone action until some future date with specific information requested. So, I have a specific motion that I want to make under that option. And I'm going to pass out, I had sent a note to everybody with a summary of it that did have an outlining error that was pointed out to me by the city manager. So, I'm going to pass down a copy of it so that everybody has. So, I'd like to make the motion and read it because it's fairly detailed and then ask for a second. I move that the City Commission postpone action on changes to Section 98.37 of the city ordinances until after the presentation of the proposed five-year capital improvement plan in the spring of 2019, and that a written report be included with that CPI plan that includes at least the following information. One, any legal or practical considerations of adding all multiple family dwellings, including rooming and boarding houses, to the current snow removal ordinance that mandates sidewalk snow removal for commercial and industrial properties. Two, the financial and practical implications of expanding the current snow removal service that covers approximately 15 miles of city sidewalks back to 25 miles within three years and then adds five miles a year after that with the goal of eventually covering all or most of the sidewalks in the residential areas. Three, an analysis of potential funding sources for either in-house or contracted snow removal that would consider, among other options, A, suspending some or all new sidewalk construction for a period of time in order to cover the cost of purchasing new high-efficiency snow removal equipment; B, consolidating the capital improvement expenditures currently used for new sidewalks, maintenance of sidewalks, and pedestrian lighting into a new walkability fund and include sidewalk snow removal as a part of that fund; C, explore other options for funding that might include designating a certain portion of the capital improvement millage each year toward walkability, adding a small fee to the water bill to cover sidewalk snow removal, designating any increased revenue from the local portion of the new medical marijuana tax to walkability, using part of the general fund, economic development fund, the Economic Initiative Fund, for equipment purchase or an increase in the millage rate or other possible sources of revenue; and four, a summary of potential resources available to property owners who would need assistance in shoveling sidewalks if an ordinance requiring snow removal is adopted, and a recommendation on how the city would assist in matching those resources with property owners in need. This might involve providing incentives to neighborhoods or to individuals who could assist others in snow removal.
Commissioner Joseph?
I second the motion.
Thank you, because that was a lot to read without us getting a second.
Commissioner Lang?
And I'd just like to give a brief, since I've read an awful lot, I'd just like to give a brief explanation that I think we've obviously been discussing this off and on for years. And it is clear that there is a division, both within the community and among the board members, on what is the best way to proceed. And while we have gotten a lot of information from the staff at this point, I think there is still some additional information that we need before we would be comfortable making a decision on whether or not to go with really one of three options, which is the city removes all of the snow in the residential areas, the city does a combination of some, an ordinance that requires some, and the city does some, or an ordinance that requires everyone. Those are really the three major options that we could look at. And I think we need to make a decision on that. And the reason I put the date in here is I think we need to make that decision before we approve a capital improvement budget next year because it will impact the capital improvement budget. And so, I'm hoping that by giving the staff approximately six months or so to get this additional information, that we might finally settle this issue that we have been debating for many, many years.
Commissioner Kulik?
If we're going down that road, I'd like to amend the motion to include a option five, which would be that the city would plow streets that have a posted speed of more than 25 miles an hour, like we do school routes, and all the other residential streets would be left as is. Which would be, there's no requirement to shovel.
I think we would need, do you guys need clarification? I'm getting a lot of, do you want to clarify what you mean by that?
Yeah, can you just say the repeat because I'm not sure I know what was being...
Say it again. The proposal would be that the city would plow, just like we do school walking routes, all streets with, that have sidewalks that have a posted speed limit on them of more than 25 miles an hour. And the remaining residential streets in the city would not have a requirement to shovel.
So, I think he's saying that there are some streets, say Fancher, that have posted speed limits, but there are other streets such as...
Fancher is not posted over 25 miles an hour.
Oh, you only want it if it's over 25?
Over 25. High Street, there's not that many streets in the city that have a posted over 25.
And they wouldn't do it on those?
They would do, they would only do that on those major streets that have a posted of over 25.
So, I would need a second for that amendment.
I'll second the motion just so we can have a discussion on it.
Commissioner Lang?
And I would actually, since all we're doing is putting down things that are, here's things that we could look at. That's why I wanted to make sure. First, I thought Commissioner Kulik was suggesting we not plow the streets anymore. That's why I needed to have, because I don't want to replace plowing the streets with the sidewalks. And I don't have any problem with saying, let's look at all the options. And if that's an option that Commissioner Kulik thinks that we should take a look at, I'm not sure I would ever go there, but I certainly don't have any problem with our looking at it. So, I would be willing to support that as another thing that the city could look at what the implications would be.
Other comments on that amendment to the motion? All right. I think I'm going to need to show hands on these motions this evening. So, all those in favor of that amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
None.
That amendment passes for three. So, the motion is as was handed out and read, plus the Commissioner Kulik's amendment. Any comments or questions on that?
Can you tell me who the three were against that? I couldn't quite...
Lalonde, Gillis, and Lance.
Thank you.
Can I make a comment?
Yeah, sure thing.
I would just encourage you to think about these options a bit before you vote on it because even though, as Commissioner Lang mentioned, we have six months to work on this, there's quite a bit here. And I would prefer that we spend time on things that you're truly interested in pursuing so that we give you good information on those things you are most interested in in trying to, instead of trying to give you a little bit of information on things that you may not be interested in. So, I would just ask you to think about that. Certainly, if you want us to look at all five, we will do our best to do that. And as I indicated during the work session, we may have to come back with some follow-up questions, but we will certainly do our best. But I would just ask that you at least think about that momentarily.
I appreciate Commissioner Ling's attention and, and time that she put into this motion. I do believe it's a little wordy and a little all over the board. And I know Ms. Ridley constantly reminds us of limited ta- staff time on what we really want the staff to work on and find information. So, um, I'm, I'm, everybody here on, on our board knows what I want out of sidewalk snow removal, and that's for the city to accommodate that. But I would hate to have such a lengthy motion with all those different options and not downsize it a little bit and give them more direction. So I'd like to make an amendment to the motion that, um, we postpone this and consider maybe two of these analyseses. One would be to have all the city residents do their sidewalks, and number two, to have the city do the sidewalks.
Yeah, just clarification, I'm not sure we can postpone a postponed amendment, because the amendment is to postpone.
Okay, yeah. To change the motion rather than having five different options, options for the staff to investigate, to limit it to the two sides of this coin. One, residents do the so- s- snow removal. Two, the city does the snow removal.
So you're saying eliminate one, two, three, and four altogether, and just have two options, either city does it, or residents do it? That's your amendment?
Yep, if I get support.
I'll second it for discussion. I guess, Commissioner Gillis, I'm, I think that the intent of Commissioner Ling's motion and amendment here is to, to look at both of those options. And she, I think she really lines out a lot of different possibilities of how to fund the city doing it, and different ways that we could go about that. And I think she also leaves in some language that says, if we don't go down the route of the city doing the snow shoveling, that, and we require our property owners to do it themselves, that it'll, that we add some language in looking at how we would help people who are maybe disabled, or are elderly, or for whatever reason, they can't really do it themselves, that there are resources available and that the city looks into those options. So I, so I think that although Commissioner Ling's motion is, is long, and it, it can seem like it involves a lot, I think that it really covers actually the same thing that your, that your goal is, so.
Commissioner Ling.
I, I guess I would say, I, I, it is, there's no question I'm, I'm asking a lot here. But as Commissioner Joseph indicated, what I'm saying is, I don't think at this point we have a, I don't think at this point we have a consensus on whether or not we want to go with the city doing the sidewalks, or having an ordinance requiring the residents to do the sidewalks. I don't think we're in a position to make that decision. And the reason I think we're not in a position to make that decision is because various people on the board have questions in all of the areas that I've raised in the motion. So what I've tried to do here is to say, as we've had this discussion over, really since June, these are all of the things that have come up, where, where one person or another has said, unless we do, unless I know this, I can't vote for it, or unless, I can't vote for having an ordinance requiring everyone to do it if I don't know the assistance that's going to be available. So I guess what I'm really saying is, I just don't think we're in a position to make that decision. The purpose of this is to say, okay, come next spring, before we adopt the capital improvement budget, we're going to make this decision. And it's either going to be a, residents are required to do it, or the city is doing it, or a hybrid. But once we've made, once we have this information, I think we can make the decision. If there were some of these things people hadn't asked about, you know, I probably wouldn't have included it. But I was trying to include everything that I've heard people raise as issues, so.
Commissioner Kulik.
Commissioner Ling, there's a third option between an ordinance where everybody does it, or some sort of hybrid, and that option is that we adopt no ordinance.
Yes. And I know that that's been...
All right. So we have a motion, an amendment to the motion on the floor right now, when it has a second. So we need, without any other comments or questions on that motion, we need a vote on that, which was from Commissioner Gillis, to narrow the scope of the postponement. So again, I'll ask for a show of hands. All those in favor of that amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
That motion fails. So we're back to the motion to postpone that Commissioner Ling proposed with Commissioner Kulik's amendment. Any other comments or questions? All right. I will just make a brief comment. I will not be supporting the postponement. You all know how I feel about sidewalk shoveling, so I will leave it at that. With that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay.
Nay.
Commissioner Kulik and Lentz were against. All right, so that motion is postponed. We will move on to item number fifteen, which is receiving and considering a recommendation from the Local Officers Compensation Commission. City manager.
By charter, the Local Officers Compensation Commission meets every five years to review the pay for the commissioners and the mayor, and two thousand and eighteen is that lucky five-year mark. So in your packet are the minutes of the meeting from the LOCC this year and their recommendation. And I would indicate that in Mount Pleasant, the focus has always been on trying to find the right dollar amount that recognizes that what you really do is primarily a volunteer position on the commission. And so that's one of the things that the committee discusses heavily every five years in my experience. The recommendation from the Local Officers Compensation Commission is to change the commissioner pay from one thousand dollars per year to one thousand five hundred dollars per year, and the compensation of the mayor from one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars per year to two thousand dollars per year. According to the city charter, excuse me, you only have two options available to you. You can accept the recommendation from the LOCC, and it goes into effect in January of two thousand and nineteen, or you can reject the recommendation and the pay stays at its current amount. I believe Mr. Olivieri, yes he is, who was the chairperson of the LOCC, is here this evening, if you have any questions on the work that the group did.
Commissioner Kulik.
Would the L, L, whatever they are, also be the person, the, the group that would look at whether we, it would be appropriate to start paying a modest per diem to our boards and commission members? Or would that be something that would come from the commission?
I believe that would come from the commission, because the LOCC gets their authority from the charter, and it's very specific to just the pay of the commissioners.
I'm looking for a motion on this item. Commissioner Kulik.
Move to approve the, the recommendation as submitted by the Local Officers Compensation Commission.
Supported by Commissioner Gillis. Any comments or questions? Vice Mayor Madai.
So I had a, you know, just a personal history thing for myself. I, I had the unique experience of, you know, serving on this commission in my former community where I lived in back in Bay City. So, reading through the minutes and the, you know, memo of this, you know, commission, it, it looked, you know, very familiar with the, you know, the activities that I had, you know, taken part in, you know, way back when. But in any event, the, you know, you know, I hope it's not, you know, misunderstood that, you know, when you see, you know, on behalf of the commissioner pay, that it's going from, you know, one thousand to fifteen hundred, that it's, that's a fifty percent increase, that, that isn't with regard to, you know, a relatively small number. I would anticipate the wage study that the commission had looked at, you'd find in, you know, many communities, amounts that are higher than that. And with regard to the, the, the last time that there was a raise considered, you know, the, the, I think the record, yeah, I'm just finding it right now, that, you know, the last time there was a raise considers back in two thousand and three, so fifteen years ago. That's a fairly significant time, you know, and consider that relative to other, you know, positions that are, that exist, you know, to, to pass over, you know, reviews of wages in that period of time is, you know, kind of unheard of. And, and also for that matter, I'll note that in my own observations, it's unusual that this is only done every five years in this community, my own opinion, I'll say. So, you know, because I think in other communities, you'll see every two years. So I'll be supporting this for various reasons. The, the, given the, the relatively, the small number that we're dealing with in the first instance, the great length of time that goes in between reviewing this. And I'm also interested in, you know, given that, you know, there is, you know, some amount of time, you know, that people give up, you know, to take part in this, you know, to serve on the commission. You know, I, this, in my interest in, you know, for the next commission and the next commission after that, that, you know, in order to get a, you know, qualified, diverse pool of people, that, you know, not everyone has the means to, you know, give up as much time as, as, as we do here. And I want to make sure that, that, that the amount of compensation here is appropriate to assure, or to work more toward, you know, more diverse pool of, of candidates. So thank you.
Other comments? Commissioner Kulik.
I'll, I'll be supporting the motion. From when I first came on the commission until now, the time commitment has increased exponentially as the length of the work sessions and the number of work sessions have, have increased. And if you were to take all the, I'm sure, I don't know if Jeremy did it or not, went, how many hours did we put in in meetings and work sessions this year? And divide that by the thousand dollars, I'm not sure that we make even minimum wage, so I'll be supporting this.
Other comments or questions? And say, I know that it, it is a large increase if you look at the, the amount that we are receiving now compared to what commissioners will be receiving next year. But it relatively is a pretty small amount of money that we're receiving to do these jobs. We really are volunteers. I know as the mayor, I easily put in ten to fifteen hours a week in different meetings and being available. And I generally try to use the money that I receive from this to, to help make me a better mayor by going to events, by attending fundraisers, by being a part of the community. And I know that there are other commissioners appear, and commissioners in the past who, who do the same thing. They take their, that money and kind of set it aside to continue to give back to the community in ways that they are able. And so I think that, yes, it's a, an increase, but I think that it's relatively small, even in this community, compared to the amount of money that other boards make. So I will also be supporting this. So with that, all of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Item number sixteen, right? Yes. Consider associated non-principal shopping district fees for the sale of the, or the sale of the gum buster machine. Yeah?
In May, you asked that we look...
Commissioner Kulik.
I was going to make a motion that we do not sell the gum buster machine.
Oh, hold on, let me ask Ms. Ridley to go give us a little information first.
So in May, you asked that we look into the ability to rent the machine to businesses that are located outside of the principal shopping district? And the legal advice indicated that that would be okay to do, but the rate should be at a higher level since the principal shopping district special assessment funds were used to purchase it. So the principal shopping district board has recommended some out-of-district rates for your consideration, but they also suggested that due to the lack of interest in using the machine since it was purchased, that maybe it might be a better idea to sell the machine now and recoup some of the funds that were used to purchase it. I guess our staff recommendation is, now that we have in-district rates, and you have recommended before you this evening out-of-district rates, and we have the appropriate rental agreement that's been drafted, that maybe it might be worthwhile to try it for a year to see if the interest in using it increases over this next year. And if not, it can always be sold at the end of two thousand and nineteen.
Commissioner Kulik.
Move that we accept the proposed rental rates and do not sell the gum buster machine.
So you're approving the out-of-district rates for rental?
Yes.
As presented and evaluating the use of the machine at the end of two thousand and nineteen?
I'm just saying, don't sell it.
Don't, don't evaluate, just approve the rental rates. Okay.
And keep the machine.
Is there a second? Seeing none, I think that motion fails. Is there another motion? Vice Mayor Madai?
And I'll move to have staff sell the gum buster machine and deposit the proceeds in the PSD account.
Is there a second? Commissioner Lalonde. Commissioner Joseph.
Since we've bought the gum buster machine, has anyone used it?
No.
And how much did we buy it for?
Seven thousand one hundred and seventy dollars, I think. I'm going from memory. Let me double check.
Yep, you're right.
My question might be a little, not necessarily related to the motion, but how were the rates for the rental, how were those?
Calculated.
Yeah, thank you.
The out-of-district rates were recommended to be twenty-five percent higher than the in-district rates. I will have to look to Marion or Michelle to be reminded on how the in-district rates were set, because that was done back in May.
The in-district rates, we looked at the depreciation value of it, what it costs every time you use it on a depreciation basis, and then what the operating costs are for it.
Okay. I, my comment is, I'm in support of selling it, just because, one, we've had no use, and two, I think the rental rates that, that are, just seem too high. I don't, you know, for, for basically no interest by anyone so far. And then we're asking, if you're out of the district, two hundred and twenty dollars for a day, or if, even if you're in district, nearly the same, a hundred and seventy-five dollars, that just seems prohibitive to me. And I, I think that's a major reason why people would pass it up. And so if this commission is not willing to reduce those rates, then I say we should sell it.
Commissioner Ling.
When we say that there, no one has, has rented, and no one has taken advantage of it and rented it, has it been used at all?
Can I ask Michelle to answer that?
Absolutely.
She's more familiar with it.
Today, I and the Tifa Chair are the only ones who have used the machine.
Okay. And, and along those lines, I guess I would say, I mean, I'm trying to think back to when we had this whole discussion of, of purchasing it. And so I guess I'll ask it this way. What's the gum situation on the sidewalks at this point? I mean, are we, have we found a different way of dealing with that situation?
This is going to seem like a, a half-answer, yes and no. Yes, the gum is gone. What remains is the, it almost looks like a grease stain. It's, it's a residue that's left over from gum even after you've cleaned it, unless you use the detergent, for example, that the gum buster has. So when you just use a, a regular power washer, it will still leave a small residue, less than it was before, but there'll still be a, a slight ring where the gum was.
And if you could, Michelle, if you want to give us a little bit more about, I know that there's a lot of information in here, but why are we not using it?
Well, we now have professional cleaning done on the sidewalks once a year, so most property owners are not feeling that it's required beyond that. They don't feel that there's, if you will, enough gum or whatever to clean up at that point.
Commissioner Kulik, did you have another comment?
My comment is that we're going to get pennies on the dollar for a used gum buster machine that we paid seven thousand dollars for. It costs us nothing to keep it in the, wherever it's stored. It costs us nothing to keep it in the, wherever it's stored at right now. And in a year or two years or three years, somebody wants to use it, they can rent it from us. There's no requirement that I, individual 20-foot-wide store owner downtown, rent it myself. I rent it for the day and I have, uh, my neighbor here, I do his, I do hers, I do several of them. You can do a whole block in a day. Um, so it isn't, you know, it's like, yeah, $125 to do a 20-foot-wide sidewalk seems a little pricey. But don't think so cheap, folks. Do your neighbors. I mean, just like when I shovel my neighbor's snow when it's, when it snows. I'll be voting against this.
And I would also point out, it can be rented for shorter time periods than a full day. Um, it can be rented for as low as four hours at a time.
So right now, the motion that's on the floor is to sell the gum buster machine. Are there a second for that? Are there other comments or questions before we have that vote? Commissioner Gillis.
I'm really disappointed that we bought this in the first place, because I know the issue last year, gum is everywhere, oh my goodness, we have to do something about the gum. Um, Mrs. Ponsella decided to buy the gum buster machine, but it didn't work. So then we ended up, or the taxpayers down in downtown are now doing it on a yearly basis to get rid of the gums. And the gum buster machine didn't work as well as what was, what you thought it was gonna work. But we're stuck with a $7,000 machine now that, because you've taken on the task of allowing commercial people to come in and clean the sidewalks. It obviously was a waste of money, didn't look into it enough to find out if it was gonna be effective. Kind of reminds me of the roundabout on Bellows. Let's put in a roundabout, let's make it bigger, let's take out the roundabout. So now we've got a gum buster machine that, um, may or may not be used, uh, by the resident, or by the businesses downtown. Um, I don't know if you've done any tests to see if it would take off the graffiti on buildings, uh, because I know that was a portion of the discussion when you decided to buy it, wasn't just for the gum, it was for some of the graffiti.
Have I tested it? No, but there are videos on, on the company's website, you can see that.
And so if we were to try to sell it now, of course, it would be a used gum buster machine, and somebody would be saying, well, why aren't you guys keeping it? Because it doesn't work on gum.
No, it, it does work on gum. Let me be very clear. It absolutely works on gum. Absolutely.
Okay. So then why did we do professional if it was working on gum?
Because at that time, we were only looking at gum. And when the decision was to look beyond gum, you needed something with much more power, more heat, and a wider spray than what the gum buster has.
Okay. Well, like you say, I'm really disappointed that we, we've taken $7,000 from that budget, and now we have a gum buster that may or may not be used. So, um, just put that out there.
Commissioner Kulik.
I'd like to point out that it, the recommendation for the gum buster came from the downtown people themselves. They wanted it, that's the only reason why Michelle brought it to us.
Vice Mayor Mad Eye?
And I do appreciate the staff's, uh, you know, work at, you know, trying to find solutions and trying to experiment, try to work things out, um, you know, trying to come to a, a solution. But, you know, given this particular activity and this, um, and the history of this, this product, um, you know, I think I'm gonna, I think the phrase fisher cut bait is appropriate here, and so I'm ready to, um, you know, sell the, the gum buster.
Commissioner Lalonde.
I think considering that we had no interest in using the gum buster, it doesn't make sense to hoard a machine that nobody's gonna use. We might as well get some money out of it. So I'm in support of selling it.
Any other comments or questions before we move to a vote? I will just say, um, I think that we need to recognize that, that sometimes in order to succeed, you have to take chances, and they don't always pan out. And sometimes you get something, you try something, and it doesn't work. And I think that for the commissioners to sit up here and reprimand staff or reprimand a decision that was made to say, you screwed up, is disingenuous to the city staff. And it makes them afraid to try other new things. And other new things might work beautifully, and they might be amazing. But if staff is afraid to take that chance, we will never move forward in the community. We have to do better for our community, and in order to do that, there might be opportunities where it doesn't always work out the way we intend. And so I think at some point, you have to say, you know what, we tried it, it didn't work. In the grand scheme of things, $7,000 is not the end of the world. Let's get what we can out of it and move forward, um, with what we are. So I will be supporting this motion. With that, are, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
That motion passes six to one. All right. Item number 18, I'll ask Ms. Ridley to go over, um, considering approval of downtown restructuring.
At your October 8th work session, we discussed a draft proposal that was presented that looked at restructuring our downtown activities, our downtown funding, and our downtown boards. And at that point in time, you indicated that there was enough interest in that proposal that we should obtain input from the downtown boards, which we did. And the majority of the members of the downtown boards that were in attendance were supportive, but they did have two major concerns. And one had to do with the input that property owners and business owners would have in the downtown, and whether the Tax Increment Finance Authority would have ongoing funding. So we've updated the proposal from what you saw in the work session, and then we went, moved forward and worked out many of the implementation details of the proposal. Um, as you know from our discussion, it's quite comprehensive, and so I don't know that I can do justice in explaining every nuance that's in the proposal, but I think there's a couple major ones that I would like to highlight before you ta, we ask you to take action on it tonight. And you'll recall that this came about because we've tried different ways to restructure funds in the downtown, to make it more clear so that people understand the different funding sources and what they're for. And we restructured a lot in 2015, but unfortunately, we still have the confusion over what funds what. And also, since that time, it's become more and more apparent that there's not enough tax increment funds to properly maintain the 13 public parking lots that are in the downtown area. And then lastly, when we combined the boards in 2016, there was an indication that that needed to be reviewed after two years and see if that combination was working. So this proposal, um, basically does two things. One, it recommends that we separate the boards back out, so that we have a tax, Tax Increment Finance Authority Board, and we have a Principal Shopping District Board, and that they be independent boards that no longer overlap but certainly communicate together. And in order for them to be successful, we've recommended that their, um, area of focus be narrowed, so that the Principal Shopping District Board would be focused solely on those activities that are funded by the special assessment, which is the groundskeeping, the beautification, and the clearing of the sidewalks, and, or clearing of the parking lots and cleaning of the sidewalks. So anything that's funded by the special assessment is what that board would oversee, which is what the state law intended. The Tax Increment Finance Authority Board, instead of having to worry about paying for infrastructure, and the Downtown Development Director, and trying to find ways to increase economic activity, they would be focused solely on looking at ways to increase academic activity. So as we looked at what all that means from a funding standpoint, um, what our recommendation is, is that the General Fund and the Capital Improvement Millage would become responsible for the infrastructure in the downtown, and it would be treated as public infrastructure for the good of the entire city, so that then you, as a board, can weigh the priorities of that infrastructure against the rest of the city, instead of having two separate boards making those large decisions. Our Recreation Department would become responsible for the citywide events that happen to be held downtown. They obviously have ex, expertise in event, um, planning, and so they would take over the true events that are citywide. And the Downtown Development Director would be funded by the General Fund, so that we have a stable, ongoing funding for that position, just like we've tried to do for all of our positions. And probably the most significant change in the proposal is the tax capture percentage for the downtown would be reduced to zero. And the reason for that is that way then funds are returned to the General Fund and the Capital Improvement Fund to help cover some of those costs that are being picked up there. And it also returns approximately $75,000 to the other units of government. And then to address the board's concern about having funding for economic initiatives, we would suggest an allocation of $80,000 from the Economic Initiatives Fund to be focused on, um, spurring economic activity. So from a bottom-line perspective, when we move all that money through the budgets, and Marianne works her magic with it, the General Fund basically, on an operational standpoint, breaks even with all of these changes. The Recreation Fund has a slight positive impact to give them some flexibility with the events, um, because some of them, it's hard to predict some of the revenue and expenses with them. Um, the Tifa Fund stays whole, and really where the, um, challenge becomes is in the Capital Improvement Fund, because the Capital Improvement Fund picks up a lot of infrastructure that wasn't previously planned to be used for those. But quite frankly, we would have had that challenge anyway, because those parking lots have some long-term needs, and then, and we always knew the Tax Increment Finance Authority wasn't gonna have enough to do it. So at some point, that was gonna happen anyway. And so from an operational standpoint, that's the bottom line of what really happens with it. So in order to be able to implement that for January 1st, we wanted to make the formal proposal to you this evening, so that you could consider the two resolutions that we've given to you. And one of the resolutions formally separates the two boards and identifies what though they would be made up of in the future, so that the Appointments Committee can make recommendations for you for next year. And the second one asks us to move forward with the implementation details, so that when you consider the budget in December, all of that will already be taken into consideration in that budget resolution you would be approving. I know it's a lot, and it's a complex, comprehensive proposal. Um, so it would be helpful if you were comfortable with it this evening, but if for some reason you're not, because there's so many moving pieces there, we do have time that you could take a couple more weeks and think about it, and take action at your next meeting, and we would still have time to implement it into the budget. Um, so it's really your call how quickly you're willing to, um, take action on such a comprehensive recommendation.
Commissioner Kulik.
Move to approve the resolution regarding the membership of the Tax Increment Finance Authority, Downtown Development Authority, and Principal Shopping District Boards, and move to approve the resolution for restructuring the funding and responsibilities of the downtown activities.
I see support from Vice Mayor Mad Eye. Commissioner Joseph.
I have a question, um, for the city manager. When I look at the, the Tifa Fund, they have a balance right now of it, that was projected at the first of the year to be $801,000. If we, um, allocate the $80,000 from the Economic Initiatives Fund, is that gonna, that's gonna add to that $800,000 balance, correct?
Kind of. Um, a large portion of that balance, I think about $550,000 of it, is already assigned toward future parking lots that we have coming up over the next couple years. So we're already expecting that that will be used to do those first two parking lots in 2020 and 2022, I believe it is. So the largest chunk of that is already assigned to projects. Another piece of it is, and I don't remember the numbers off the top of my head, is assigned to the fire safety grant program that's in place, and for the facade improvement program. So those two pieces of funds would remain in the Tifa Fund for that board to be able to use for those two programs that impact economic activity, or to recommend that they be reallocated to some other area if they think they could be better used. Um, so, yes, there's projected to be a large sum there, but it's already allocated to specific projects. So the 80,000 would be for new economic activity programs.
And it's, my memory might not serve me well, but, um, is that a change from when we, this plan was first proposed? Because I, my understanding was that, um, basically, they're gonna, we're gonna reduce the capture to zero, and then the Tifa Board is gonna have the money that they have, and if they wanted Economic Initiative Fund money, that they would have to propose that to the city commission, and then we would say, okay, we like that idea, or we don't.
Yes, that is a slight change, because the Tifa Board was concerned whether they would have funds to do anything, so they wanted some assurance that they would have some funds available for a new program if needed. So that is a change to allocate that money now instead of later from that Economic Initiatives Fund. But one of the provisions that we put in the proposal is that program that they implement obviously needs to come to you for approval, um, before it's implemented. And if something is not implemented by the end of 2020, then that money would go back into the Economic Initiatives Fund. So we put a couple fail safes in there, so that you're still involved with it, but it addressed their concern about spending time coming up with a program and then not having any money to be able to do anything with that program.
And I just have one more question. So if recreation is taking over events, the, this $80,000 that they want to do things, these are things solely based on economic initiatives?
Correct. It would have to be, it would have to drive economic activity.
Okay.
Other comments and questions? Commissioner Gillis.
Well, Commissioner Joseph took over my question that we were just talking about, so, got one up on me, he will. Um, so we're gonna be doing this $80,000 a year from the Economic Initiative Fund? Or is it just a one-time thing?
At this point, it's just one time. Now, it, I can't tell you that they won't come back in future years and ask for additional allocations, but this proposal is just for the first one-time one.
And then, uh, also, somewhere in this budget, and I'm not sure where, don't we contribute $84,000 for something down there?
We can, the General Fund contributes approximately $80-some thousand dollars for events, and so that money, instead of going to the downtown funds, would instead go to the Recreation Fund to sponsor those events.
Okay. Well, that's a lot of money to be left when we've taken all the other stuff that they're responsible off their plate. So, because they're still gonna be having about $300,000 to do the, um, two initiatives that you had said, facade and fire safety grants, um, approximately.
Marianne, do you know those numbers off the top of your head?
The facade is 75, I'm sorry, the fire safety is 75, and facade is 51,000.
But then isn't there a, is that 75 over two years for the fire safety?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay. Oh, I have one more question. I'm sorry. This is complicated. I'm almost willing to make a motion to postpone it, I know we hate that word, to postpone it for two weeks, so we can look at it a little more intently. So that would be, do we already have a motion on the floor?
We have a motion on the floor.
But a motion to postpone is always in order.
Are you making that motion?
Yeah. Yes, I am.
I'd second that.
Okay. So right now, I have a motion to postpone. Um, are there comments or questions on that motion? Commissioner Ling.
In light of the fact that the city managers indicated that that would not create a problem for the staff in terms of preparing the budget, because that would be my only concern, is we are, if we do this, we do have to make some changes for the budget that we'll be approving at our meeting in December. But if the staff is comfortable with that, um, I would be supportive of that, partly because of some of the issues that have been raised on the, the transfer of the money, but also, it will then avoid my needing to go into discussion of the membership of the Tifa Board, which is, I, I have some real issues with, um, the wording on it, partly as chairman of the Appointments Committee, and I'm looking at that wording. And I'm looking at that wording and thinking, really, we're going to get that specific in terms of three of them have to be owners and three of them have to be maybe employees or related in some other way and all of them are going to be business people? I mean, it's so specific that I think in terms of filling the positions is going to be difficult because it's sometimes very difficult to find enough people to fill some of these positions anyway. And I was hesitant to try to throw out a motion that would require everybody to look at, what does the DDA say and what does the Tifa say? So if we postpone it, I can then send out a suggestion and maybe we could word it this way and I think it'd be easier to do it. So for that reason, because of some concerns about the finances and also because I really would like to reword a little bit the wording on the Tifa membership because I think it's going to be difficult to use, I'm going to support a motion to postpone it.
Yeah, I, we, when the city manager and I talked about the issues that were outstanding and how we were going to fit them all in, I said, let's try and have a proposal tonight. And that gave us a little bit of wiggle room so that we had the opportunity. So that's, yes, that was anticipated, almost you could say. So right now we have a motion to postpone. Commissioner, Vice Mayor Mad Eye.
And I'll just say that I think I'm okay with the proposal as presented at the moment. So I will be opposing the motion to postpone.
I also am going to oppose the postponement because I'm also comfortable with it, but I understand that others may not feel as comfortable. So without any other comments or questions, show of hands as well, those, all those in favor of postponing, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Got that? Yep, so it's a four-three. So that motion is postponed to the next meeting. I will ask that if you have any comments or questions or clarifications that you need if you want to let the city manager know as soon as possible so she has the opportunity to get you that information, including I'm hearing maybe a quick conversation with the attorney and/or the appointments commission on that wording for the Tifa, if there's a way to clean that up. We'll do that. Do you have other?
I was just going to reemphasize the sooner the better because remember, next week is a very short week. So we have to get the commission packet out to you on Wednesday. So, yeah.
So maybe by like tomorrow.
I forgot.
After this, it's a short week, right?
Yeah.
This week and then it's the next week that's a short week.
Yes, but they, we have.
I get it though. I understand.
Agenda has to be together, you know, Monday essentially, Tuesday. So, all right, so those items are postponed. Item number 19, this is a fun one. A request to, for some funding for a rail line from Ann Arbor to Traverse City for passengers.
Yes, as you know, the groundwork center for resilient communities proposed a bold initiative to explore the creation of a passenger train service from Ann Arbor to Traverse City. And they held a number of public forums, one right here in this room as a matter of fact. And funds were raised to match the federal dollars to allow for the feasibility study to make sure it was even possible to do that. And their report was released in October, which indicates it is possible to do. And so the next step they're looking at is ascertaining what the economic impact is of the communities along the stops, of which we are quite hopeful that Mount Pleasant would be one of those. And so two-thirds of the cost of the study for that economic impact will be covered with federal funds. And they have requested that Mount Pleasant consider putting in $5,000 toward the cost of that study. We did not participate in the original study. Many other communities along the rail line did, but we did not at that point in time. So we're recommending, this is a good time to invest our funds to be a part of that study. So we're recommending the city contribute $5,000 toward it and that the funds come from our economic initiative fund.
I see a motion from Commissioner Kulik, seconded by Commissioner Joseph. Any comments or questions?
I'm really excited about the idea of this becoming a reality. I know we had a large crowd earlier about our citizen advisory board and I think last week I got to really participate in a couple of conversations about diversity, especially post-election. And one of the things that I brought up and I think that's been brought up around the city is that part of our lack of diversity is our accessibility. And I think a rail line that comes through Mount Pleasant, especially from Ann Arbor to Traverse City, gives us one more way for people to come to Mount Pleasant and either go to school here, maybe even work here, but especially maybe even shop here in our downtown. And so I'm really supportive of this idea. It's something that I've talked about since I've been involved in the city and I'm really happy to contribute to the phase two of this study.
Any other comments or questions? Commissioner Gillis.
I'm also looking forward to this. I've been on board for a rail trail, a rail train from Ann Arbor to Mount Pleasant up to Traverse City. Just to throw out a wild idea, if we do have this come to fruition, I know some of our city commissioners have a specific vision for parcel B. My vision has always, have always been to have a hotel there on parcel B to accommodate the passengers that may come in on the train if they were able to stay at a hotel that was planned for parcel B. And we could have shuttles to and from some of our major areas of entertainment and also the shopping downtown and our park system. I think that would be a beautiful place for a downtown hotel and would contribute to the success of this train from A2 to TC. That's just my thought, just to plant something into commissioners' heads about alternatives of what would be great for that parcel B.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passes. All right. Item number 20, considering a closed session and to consult with the attorney regarding litigation strategy and settlement negotiations pursuant to section 8E of the Open Meetings Act. I will look for a motion from Commissioner Kulik, seconded by Vice Mayor Mad Eye. And if the city manager has any other comments, I will ask the city clerk to take a roll vote.
Commissioner Ling.
Just a point of clarification. We're voting on number 20 first, that closed session, and then we'll have another vote on 21, that closed session issue. Thank you.
So Commissioner Ling.
Aye.
Commissioner Lalone.
Aye.
Commissioner Kulik.
Yes.
Commissioner Joseph.
Aye.
Commissioner Gillis.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mad Eye.
Aye.
Mayor Lentz.
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right. And item number 21 is another second closed session this evening pursuant to subsection 8H of the Open Meetings Act.
So moved.
I see a motion from Commissioner Kulik, seconded by Vice Mayor Mad Eye. Again, I'll ask the clerk to do a roll call vote.
Commissioner Gillis.
Aye.
Commissioner Joseph.
Aye.
Commissioner Kulik.
Aye.
Commissioner Lalone.
Aye.
Commissioner Ling.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mad Eye.
Aye.
Mayor Lentz.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you. All right, do we have any announcements on city-related issues and new business this evening? Commissioner Kulik.
Give John the opportunity to talk about wrapping up of leaf pickup.
We're raking to the street we're collecting this week and then there'll be a week to put them to the street and then there's one more after, the following week after that. So this is the week that we're picking them up.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Announcements, new business? Commissioner Gillis.
Thank you. We had email about laptops and if something happened to our laptops, how we were going to handle it. Question, do we have a way to insure our laptops? I know on my home insurance, I got both my kids' computers on insurance. It was hardly anything more, like 20 bucks more a year in case coke was spilled on it or something was to happen.
I believe our deductible is high enough on our property type insurance that it wouldn't cover, it's higher than what a laptop costs because of the volume of what we're insuring.
Okay, understand. Second, I know in your Friday email, the marijuana industry or business that was going to come into our South Industrial Park has.
Withdrawn.
Withdrawn. I want to ask Mr. Mardesa, do you have any idea of why they are not pursuing that development in our South Industrial Park?
I have zero information on that. I asked the question and the, their agent said that they preferred to keep their reasoning confidential. So short of asking them again, we'll probably get the same answer. I have no, I, I don't know.
Did you reach out to them at all as far as, you know, through our economic division to try to accommodate any concerns or to make sure that they were moving in the direction of increasing our tax base?
We were working on the process of closing on the property. So beyond that, I had no indication that they were having second thoughts or had any issues. So they didn't communicate that to me and we were actually in the process of getting title insurance on that. And then they ended up withdrawing their, their interest in the, in the property.
And do you know if Jim McBride through MMDC may have tried to touch base with them for economic development? Because that's part of his job to make sure when somebody's interested in that and.
I don't believe Mr. McBride did that and Mr. McBride really wasn't in, in the loop for that. He wasn't involved in that transaction.
Okay. Well, I know he was in the loop before when the property owners out at South Industrial Park wanted to put something in the covenants and restrictions about not allowing medical marijuana. He was at those meetings and the EDC. So I just assumed that he was going to continue trying to reach out to people that wanted to develop in that property, so.
Yeah, and at this point, it was a transaction on the sale of EDC property and Mr. McBride isn't part of the EDC or between the city and the proposed purchaser. So there really wasn't an opportunity for him to be involved in that and absent additional information ahead of time that would have indicated that they were not interested in the property, there was really no, no reason to, to alert him or to involve him at that time.
Okay. Well, I'm really disappointed that we weren't able to cinch that deal because that would have been a great addition to not only property value, tax revenue, but the $5,000 that we also would have incorporated and the taxes on the goods that were coming out of that and employment. So there was all sorts of pluses to that. Last thing. I want you guys to think out of the box here. We have many areas in Mount Pleasant where we highlight our, our prominent businesses. For instance, Central Michigan put something on the corner of Bluegrass and Mission, the big, the big stones or not stones, but reflective panels that say Central Michigan. Again, over at Bellows in Mission by Johns, you know, they put in million of dollars to set, set off the corners of Central Michigan. We also have the High Street Bridge through Kurt Fight and, and the generosity of the community to repaint the High Street Bridge. So when you're coming into Mount Pleasant, we have something nice to look at. Welcome to Mount Pleasant, great things. MDOT also redid the expressway on Pickard by Home Depot, those on and off entrances, put a lot of money for brick and things around underneath the expressway overpasses. And, which brings me to the people from Maple Street that brought us a petition to ask us to reconsider what was part of Department of Public Works to narrow the, the street. Right now, the street is larger than our normal streets, Maple Street that heads from Mission to the east to the front of our hospital. We had a petition of all the neighbors. There was probably about 20 signatures and we also have, had a letter from the CEO of McLaren Hospital also asking us to reconsider narrowing that street and leaving it as is when we redo that street to the wide version of what you see, which has been there for over 50 years. We also have, the principal shopping district decided to put McLaren as our grand marshal in our winter carnival, our winter parade, our Christmas celebration lighted parade. They have been chosen to be our grand marshal. So this is all leading up to this picture. This is a picture from the 1950s of our hospital. This is a prominent place in Mount Pleasant that I was actually born in. I know some people might, I don't know if Steve can get this on the, the video. Some people might not think of this as anything other than a hospital, but I think of this as a prominent historic building that many people here in Mount Pleasant were born and raised in, also has had care, you know, medical care, that cupola still remains. It is a fantastic testimony to what was from the past and now is still here to give us health care. And for all those reasons I just mentioned, for prominence of certain buildings and how much detail and how much money we give to downtown because we feel downtown is a place to, to accelerate up, to look at our downtown, look at our Central Michigan. I also think the hospital is one of one of these places. So I would like to maybe have some discussion by our city commissioners about reevaluating that narrowing of Maple Street, not only because the citizens that live there asked us to, the CEO of McLaren Hospital asked us to, and we should be the voice of the people. So thank you for indulging me in that trip down memory lane.
All right. Other announcements? Commissioner Joseph.
I just wanted to announce that tomorrow evening at 5:30, we're having our Mount Pleasant community branding reveal at Art Reach. It's at 5:30, should go to about seven hopefully. Be there. Community development's really a big deal of what we do here and what we're trying to do in the future, so.
All right. Anyone else? With that, I will go into the last opportunity for public comment this evening that we have. This is the opportunity for anyone in the public to come up and give us any comments city-related. We ask that you keep your comments limited to five minutes and state your name and address. If you want to move on over to the microphone, Doug, that way we can get you. All the folks home in TV land can listen to you too.
What, one thing about it is I was, I had a sprained ankle on the 21st of January and I think the, the sidewalk was shoveled and it was just sort of slick and I twisted my left ankle and it took a long time to heal. So I don't know if people should even be required to shovel their sidewalks. I don't think it really, it depends on, you know, if they, if they think that they want to do it, it's okay and they don't, it's okay. And also I, why do they need, why do you need the train service from Ann Arbor to Traverse City? I thought in 1950s, they stopped the train service at least from Shepherd to Mount Pleasant and all that stuff and they showed that as sort of a, sort of historic, or they used to have a bus station where people would, yeah. So I don't know, it seems like maybe things just go into cycles like they normally, they, maybe they just go into cycles. I don't know what it is. I just, I don't understand it.
Doug, can you give us your address, please?
I live in Winchester Towers, 2001 Elva.
Thank you.
Hi again, Jim Marino, 213, 313 South Arnold. I really hope you go with that restructuring of the Tifa thing. I did catch the $70,000 back to units. We'd really appreciate that. I also thought of one more thing about the advisory group that you're contemplating and that is, I realized that the city, the police department, public safety department used to have a police academy. And I really, I talked to some officers before and they thought it'd be a really good thing to bring back. And I think that it would be a good component. and I think that it would be a good component along with this advisory group. So, regular citizens, I attended it and, um, it was quite eye-opening. We rode with the police. We saw that it's a different world at 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock in the morning than Mount Pleasant, you know, and kind of spooky, but, um, I think it would really be, right, Paul? Okay. And so, I think it might be a really good component to bring back. It was, uh, the people that I talked to said that was a financial constraint that prevented it, but the officers that I talked to thought it would be a good idea too, so I just wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments for the city commission this evening? Seeing none, I will close this opportunity for public comment. Uh, we are going to go into a recess. We will be having a closed session. We might come back out and make a comment, um, back in session here and then after the closed sessions, we'll move upstairs. So, you might want to just hang out in here for a little while.
Closed session's right here.
Closed session down here in E, in case we need to come back out and vote.
All right, we are back in session for item number 23, which is considering advice of our council.
All right, we are back in session for item number twenty-three, which is considering advice of our council. Is there a motion from Commissioner Kulik?
I move to accept the advice of council regarding settlement negotiations in the case of Western Islands LLC versus the City of Mount Pleasant.
Seconded by Commissioner Joseph. Comments or questions on that item? Commissioner Kulik.
Our attorney's been working on this issue for a while, and it's his recommendation that this is the best settlement that can be reached, short of going to trial, and the financial exposure is less to do the settlement than to potentially go to trial.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. So we will... That item is done. As for a work session, we had a work session scheduled this evening on the two thousand nineteen operating budget. We have a little bit of wiggle room in our work session discussions for the twenty-sixth, so we do have an opportunity to move this discussion to that meeting. Because it is nine fifty, so the only other work session item that we talked about was if there is more information needed before we wanted to have a vote on a citizens advisory panel. Do we want to just do that down here while we're sitting here? Okay, perfect. Didn't want to make any assumptions, but I was not going to let you guys go upstairs. So with that, I will just ask the commissioners. We heard a little bit of question. Commissioner Gillis wanted to know more about the advisory panel that the county already has and the potential of having a review board that oversees all of the departments of police and public safety, and so I think that there was a comment about that. Are there other... Did you have another one?
Well, if we could also have a member of our city commission be a part of that board, we might be covering all the bases without reinventing the wheel. If they already have an advisory board that...
Can I make a comment about...
Sure.
Are you talking about what Commissioner Marino was talking about?
Yeah.
I think there might be a slight misunderstanding. In fact, my impression is Commissioner Marino's actually is in favor of this, but he was just trying to point out that for people who might want to discuss some issue dealing with the sheriff, they always have their law enforcement committee, but that's just one of their three subcommittees. I've been, when I was on the county board, I was on that committee. It is not an advisory committee dealing with the oversight of the, of law enforcement. It's primarily dealing with financial issues that, I mean, the sheriff is a separate elected official, so they're primarily dealing with budgetary issues involving the sheriff and the county board. So it really is a completely different nature, and I believe Commissioner Marino was just trying to... Oh, am I not...
You're too real far away from your microphone.
I believe Commissioner Marino was just trying to offer county residents some other information on other times when they talk about law enforcement related issues, but it really is not, it's not, it's just one of their regular standing subcommittees, and they would not be doing this kind of work.
Okay. Well, I hesitate because the onus is being put on the city where, you know, I don't know what the concerns are individually, which brought other people out, but being that it, the conversation started at the campus level with CMU students. If it might not be more effective if we brought in a larger group of people rather than having it centered on the city's law enforcement, because it looks like it's targeted, and it might not be, but I'm saying, we have so many law enforcements, we have five different law enforcement agencies here. They all arrest central students and people of color and residents and, you know, tourists. And so to have that somehow reflect that our law enforcement is not sensitive to community concerns or other people, not just dealing with our city officers, but other people, CMU police officers, sheriff, the reservations police officers, state police. All those entities have probably encountered someone who thought they weren't being treated fairly. So we, you know, I have a problem with focusing and saying, oh, this is our problem or isn't our problem, or we just want to open up communication with our law enforcement without making a much bigger, broader picture, because we really don't know, you know, we don't know where this is coming from as far as if it's specific to city police enforcement.
I would, Commissioner LaLone, I'm going to ask you, hold on, if I could, just to respond to that. I didn't hear anyone saying that this is a problem specific to our law enforcement. I heard that this is an opportunity that the city commission has to be the leader in the community and how these issues are dealt with, and to set the example for the other four law enforcement agencies on how to be better, and that they're asking us to do it because we are a community that tends to be more progressive and more ahead of the game on a lot of things. And so this is us having another opportunity to show the community that the city of Mount Pleasant really is the best municipality in this community, and this is another opportunity to outshine the rest, is what I heard. So Commissioner Kulik, just one moment, Commissioner LaLone had her hand up, and then Commissioner Joseph, and then I will go to you.
I think there's an idea that this is somehow punitive on our police department, but it's not. It's like Mayor Lentz mentioned, it's an opportunity that I thought was pretty great that Director Loria was very enthusiastic about working with our community, about putting together. And it's not seen as a way to punish police, but as an opportunity to create a better communication between the community and our police officers, which as far as transparency goes, I think we should be all for. I also don't believe we should be waiting for our tragedy to happen, to be proactive.
Commissioner Joseph.
I guess I just wanted to make the point that although people in our community may run into other law enforcement agencies, the only one that's really under our purview is the city, and so we can only do what we can. And obviously, if we could do more considering with the state police or the tribal police or the sheriffs, I would be in support of that, or even, I actually served on a police oversight committee at CMU, and that's, I mean, that's a board that probably could, I think in its present form doesn't look exactly what ours does. It actually reviews a lot of internal reviews, and so I think that there's room to grow in all those other entities, but we can only control what we have, and so that's all I want to say.
Commissioner Kulik.
I'd be interested to know of the other, of the five police agencies that are here in Isabella County, what, if anything, close to a citizens advisory council or committee or whatever it's going to be called, any of those other agencies have.
So I hear you asking staff to get a little information on what other police agencies have.
My understanding is that the CMU has a liaison, but that's it. I don't believe anybody else.
Well, and I'd like to know how their liaison stacks up against what they're, what's being proposed for here.
So we'll have our staff get that. Commissioner Ling, did you have another comment, of course?
Just two things. One, I very much agree with what Commissioner LaLone said. This, this, the diversity group and now the Black Lives Matters group have been working on this for a long time, and their ideal would definitely be, let's have a countywide oversight committee. But they're all different jurisdictions, and so I saw a proposal that had, they'll be represented from the county, they'll be represented from the state police, they'll be represented from tribal, but we can't, we don't have the jurisdiction to do that. And it would take, I've watched other areas where there's been an attempt to have agreements, and sometimes there, we can get them and sometimes we can't, but there's a lot of complications that are involved in them. And so I think that what the committee is trying to say is, as Commissioner LaLone said, let's start where we, where, let's start here. Let's use this as an example and see how it works. That's why it's very preliminary. I mean, in the proposal, it says, at the end of a year, we will evaluate how it's gone, and maybe the next step would be, now that we've done it, let's reach out to CMU and see if there's a way in which we might be able to have a cooperative agreement with CMU. But this is designed to say, we've already been a progressive community in passing the human rights ordinance. Some of the language in the human rights ordinance really overlaps some of what we're doing here in terms of respect and for civil rights and making sure that we're doing everything we can to be protective, and therefore this is the next step, and it could then become a step to a larger. But for the most part, most oversight, police oversight boards are dealing with a specific police agency, because that's all you can really pass legislation dealing with or pass an ordinance dealing with. So it's the beginning, and I think it does allow us to set an example. And the second thing is, I, part of the reason I wanted to have a, just have a brief discussion on this is because what the staff indicated was, we think we can work with this, here's a couple tweaks, and I just wanted to make sure that whatever those are aren't going to be so significant that maybe we won't be in a position to pass it on the twenty-sixth. I mean, we can still consider it on the twenty-sixth and then move on, but I wondered whether or not the city manager had some specific ideas of what those might be and if they were, you know, major or just some adjustments. To put you on the spot.
I think, let me try to summarize them. There's a couple references to the county throughout it that I think were a carryover from the prior one. So I think those should be removed since it only does apply to the city. I think we had some concerns about the appointments, because typically when you have a committee that's up, or an advisory board that's appointed by the city commission, the city commission makes the appointments, and this has individual entities making appointments, so I thought you might want to think about that. The word oversight is used in a couple places, which we were uncomfortable with based on how it was restructured, so we'd like to wordsmith some of that, and... Sorry, this is really small print without my glasses. I think those were it. I think that covers the, so I don't think there's any showstappers in there. Do you remember more, Paul? I'm sorry.
Yeah, the one that is missing is, it's really unclear on, the way I read it is, is we get a citizen complaint, we have to call them immediately and notify them immediately whenever we get one, and that... And I just want to comment about oversight, because several of you have used that word, and I don't want to mislead the public, but that's not what this is. This is advisory. There was a headline in CM Life about oversight, and that's not what this is. I think it's important to make sure that people understand that this proposal, I think it started there, but as, in its current form, it is advisory capacity.
Paul, excuse me, I think if any complaint should be going to anybody first, it should be us. If you get a complaint, instead of you're letting the CAB committee know, I mean, I think we should have been aware of complaints anyways as they came in to see if there was even, this constitutes, you know, organizing a whole committee. And I think the spotlight is still way too much on the city. It gives me the impression, just like Commissioner Joseph had when I wanted to do self-defense training, that you're, well, maybe that would give the people the impression that CMU's not a safe place, because we're setting up self-defense for young, young people, right? They could think of, or work on the person who's sexually assaulting people. We should target them and try to convince them to be better people. That's kind of what I feel it's doing. We're trying to say, oh, we have a problem with our police officers, and so we're setting up this advisory committee, and it might not even be our police officers that anybody's encountered that had a complaint. I'm not sure. I don't know what these complaints, in the past, we haven't been privy to exactly what the complaints are, if it's a racial issue or if it's just that someone's mad because they got taken to jail, you know, so.
Commissioner Joseph, I believe you had a question?
Yeah, Paul, can you, can you, how do you see oversight as being different than advisory?
The difference in my mind is that there would be some sort of authority to discipline, to change policy and procedure. Because when you, when you look at, these are fairly popular in California, out on the west coast, and they have the authority to, like I said, discipline, change policy and procedure, training. The way this is proposed is that they would speak directly to me and say, maybe you need to look at use of force training or something along those lines. And if I, if I decide, no, this is the current best practice, that's the, I mean, that's the end of it. You know, I'm not, obviously, I would communicate with, with the city manager. She would communicate with you guys, that sort of thing. But the way an oversight committee is set up, they can make those recommendations as a part of being on the oversight committee and implement.
Commissioner Ling.
Right, and we had a fair amount of discussion of that even before this came to be reviewed by the staff, and, and some of the discussion was, as a commission, we don't have that authority. We can't set up an advisory board that we're giving authority to that we don't have authority for in the first place. So that, there never really is an option for that. The part that, that I think is advantageous for both the community and the commission relates a little bit to what Commissioner Gillis was saying, was because there is a, there is a report at the end of the year, and in fact, even quarterly, that will come to the commission, so we will get that information. It gives us, it gives us information that may then allow us to suggest some policies, and I think that that's an advantage. I think that's part of the accountability and the transparency, without saying that this group has authority that I don't even think state statute would allow us as a commission to be able to do. So I think it makes sense to change all that legacy to advisory, because that, I believe legally, right now, that's what it has to be. And the only, the other comment that I wanted to make that I didn't say before was, I personally would like to see us have a non, I'd like to see either the mayor or a representative of the mayor from the commission be a non-voting member of this group, so that they would attend and be aware of what's happening, partly because we are talking about then doing a review at the end of the year to see how it's worked and if we want to make changes, and I think that that would help to facilitate that.
Commissioner Joseph, I just want to remind everyone of the time, and so we can wrap this up, because we can, we will have this debate on the twenty-sixth about whether we support this or not. Right now, we're trying to just get, let staff know what information we might need before we are able to make that decision, so.
I just wanted to add that I support Kathy's, Commissioner Ling's, suggestion of having a commissioner representative.
And Commissioner Gillis, did you have one more comment?
Are they only going to address problems, and sorry, it's too late, with city police? Because I don't want us to be hearing about anything else from sheriff, reservation police, state police, if we're not including all those law enforcements.
We don't have authority to.
So it would be just confined to relationships with our law enforcement, city police, and the community that feels like...
The only situation that that would get brought up is in some sort of cooperative effort. We often get backed up by those other agencies, and typically, you know, the uniforms sometimes look similar, you know, they see a police officer, we all work for the same place, so to speak. It happens all the time where we get a call and one of your officers, well, I shouldn't say it happens all the time. On occasion, it happens where they say... On occasion, it happens, where they say, one of your officers did A, B, C, and D, and it ends up not being one of ours. But there's, there's some times when the perception is that it is, and then maybe that agents, they weren't satisfied with the agency, and they just refer to it as Mount Pleasant Police. Now, we weed those out, but you could hear about it, that Mount Pleasant Police, so to speak, in general terms, when it really wasn't us. Does that make sense? So.
I just don't want you to be, your reputation to be tarnished by actions of other law enforcement agencies that we're not having any discussion with, and it's just singling, sing, singling out our law enforcement agencies.
All right, with that, I will look for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Without objection, we are adjourned for the evening. Thank you.